Hi, welcome to the regular meeting of the City Council of the City of San Juan Bautista, August nineteenth at five sixteen. Uh, pledge of allegiance. Liz, who do we have up for that today? Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez, will you please start us in the pledge of allegiance?
Flag of the United States of America.
Thank you. Uh, may I please have a roll call?
Councilmember Aranda. Councilmember Friel's.
Here.
Councilmember Morris Lopez. Mayor Protem Sebastian.
Here.
Mayor Jordan.
Here.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment on closed session items only? And the closed session items are a conference with legal counsel, existing litigation Orozco versus the City of San Juan Bautista at all, and conference with legal counsel anticipated litigation.
No hands raised on Zoom and nobody in chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, with that, we are going to close session. We will see everybody else at six P M. for the regular session. Thank you. You tell me. You're the boss. I can't say. Thank you. Welcome all to the regular city council meeting of the City of San Juan Bautista, Tuesday, August nineteenth. It is now six eleven. Apologies for all those who have been in the wings waiting. Uh, Attorney Giffen, will you please take us out of special session?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council and public. The city council met in closed session on items two A and B. Two A is conference with legal counsel, existing litigation. Orozco versus City of San Juan Batista. Uh, California government code section five four nine five six point nine D one. The council heard from, uh, the city attorney. And, um, there's nothing to report out on that matter. And on two B, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to paragraphs two or three of subdivision two of section five four nine five six point nine E two. Uh, that's an enforcement action by the State Water Resources Control Board and an additional matter with facts and circumstances that might result in litigation, which are not yet known to a potential plaintiff. Special counsel attended the that conference and addressed the council, uh, received direction from the council, and there's nothing to report out.
Thank you very much. Uh, we have two proclamations, one celebrating California's hundred and seventy fifth birthday, September ninth, twenty twenty five, and naming California History Week as September seventh through the thirteenth, twenty twenty five. Uh, Councilmember Friel's, will you please do the honors?
Thank you. Whereas California received statehood on September ninth, eighteen fifty, becoming the thirty first state admitted into the Union. And this historic event deserves to be well celebrated as a state holiday. And whereas the state or the California State Legislature voted in August of nineteen ninety nine to designate the week surrounding September ninth of each year as California History Week, with special emphasis on September ninth, California Admissions Day. And whereas the Order of the Native Daughters of the Golden West, established in eighteen eighty six, is a is a fraternal and fraternal and patriotic organization of diverse California-born leaders, chartered in our mission to preserve California history and better the quality of life for all Californians. And whereas the Order honors California by preserving the California pioneers roster, funding California missions, and historic monument restoration and lighthouse preservation, offering numerous scholarships and grants for veteran services, children's needs, and college. And whereas San Juan Batista Parlor, number one seventy nine, chartered in eight nineteen ten, operates in our Adobe home at two oh three Fourth Street, San Juan Batista, and partners with organizations with similar mission to preserve and promote California history in these ways, and wishes to celebrate California's Admissions Day. Therefore, Mayor Leslie Q. Jordan, on behalf of the San Juan Batista City Council, do here designate September seventh through the thirteenth, two thousand twenty five, California History Week. In the City of San Juan Batista, and encourage all community members to celebrate this monumentous part of California's history. Signed, Leslie Q. Jordan, Mayor, City of San Juan Batista.
Thank you. Shauna, come on up, please. Do we have a photo? Hang on, wait, do that one more time, photo op. No.
Um, as you know, our California Adobe home, which is down on Fourth Street, was brought back to life by the native daughter of the Golden West from the nineteen thirty. We purchased it for a few thousand dollars and have fully restored that beautiful building that is currently under review for National Register. It's very proud of our neighborhood. Um, we are celebrating the California's Admissions Day, our birthday, if you will. We're hundred and seventy five on the ninth of September. People, thirty first states in the Union. Um, we've got amazing history and native daughters that sparkle. Helping their roster managing that for the state of California. The California actually had the first partnership with native sons and native daughters, um, helping with placing children in homes, um, back in the nineteen hundred. We've done a lot for this city. Here in San Juan Batista, I'm so proud to have, um, lots of partners that are working with us to put on an event. I'll pass this around, which just approved by Lori ten minutes ago. Um, dark hole in the California hundred and seventy fifth anniversary event on September sixth at San Juan Library, from eleven to two. And we're gonna have, uh, roots on California garden, California native plant, California virgin. Um, we've got a California serpents expert who's gonna do some stuff. Um, not that, obviously not gonna demonstrate, but but they would give you some information.
Oh, sorry. Nope. Um, and so, uh, we also are gonna be giving away, uh, California native plants. We've got some redwoods that are being donated to us by a lumber company. And, um, we've got lots of really fun stuff that's gonna happen, and it's all focused on our birthday. So we invite you to celebrate with us. Um, again, it's hosted at our library. Um, the library itself is working with the California State Library System, which has thirty one books on California that they recommend for both children, fiction, nonfiction, and adults. So we'll have some stuff going on there, too. Thank you again. We're very honored.
Super cool. Thank you very much. Congratulations. Um, please be advised for anybody who comes up to the microphone and a green light. If you will make sure that the green light is lit when you speak, um, so that everybody out in Zoomland can hear. Thank you. Thanks, Shauna. Uh, proclamation number two, National Senior Citizen Day, August twenty first, twenty twenty five. Councilmember Jose Aranda will be presenting.
So, uh, National Senior Citizens Day, August twenty first, twenty twenty five. Whereas National Senior Citizens Day was established to recognize the wisdom, achievements, and invaluable contributions of older Americans to our communities, our economy, and our shared cultural heritage. And whereas approximately seventy eight million people aged sixty five and older will reside in America by twenty thirty five, which will surpass the United States population of people under eighteen for the first time in the nation's history. And whereas the senior citizens of San Juan Bautista have played a vital role in building and shaping the city through their hard work, leadership, and dedication to family and community. And whereas our senior residents serve a as living connections to our history and traditions, generously sharing their knowledge, skills, and life experiences with younger generations. And whereas the City of San Juan Bautista is committed to fostering respect, appreciation, and support for older adults, ensuring they have opportunities to live active, healthy, and fulfilling lives. And whereas National Senior Citizens Day provides an opportunity for all residents to celebrate our elders, express gratitude for their lasting impacts, and reaffirm our dedication to promoting their dignity and well-being. And now, therefore, uh, Mayor Leslie Q. Jordan, on behalf of the San Juan of the San Juan Batista City Council, do hereby recognize August twenty first, twenty twenty five, as National Senior Citizens Day in the city, and encourage all residents to honor and celebrate our senior citizens through acts of kindness, appreciation, and community engagement, dated on the nineteenth of August. Leslie.
Thank you very much. Uh, Mary Edge, will you please come up? And anybody else representing the Mary Velasco Salin Senior Center? Thank you.
Let's see, this little green, do I push a button or anything?
Is the green light lit?
It is.
You're good.
Okay, all right. Good evening, good evening, all of, uh, your, uh, council members here. Um, and it is an honor to accept this on behalf of the Mary Velasco Salin Senior Center and all of the, uh, seniors of San Benito County. I'd like to add that we do meet every Wednesday at Casa Maria across the street over. We offer lunch and, um, we have chair yoga. We play bingo after after lunch. And I I have to add that our numbers have really increased. We've been doing this for a year. And, um, we started out with twenty people, and we're up to pushing sixty now. So it's been a blessing and very heartwarming to see the group, um, grow the way it has been. And we're currently hoping to have a building somewhere in San Juan Batista. So we have started a building fund. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Nice camera placement. Uh, presentations, Central Coast Community Energy Annual Presentation. Cynthia, Cynthia, there you are. Hi, welcome.
Hello, Mayor Jordan and council members. Thank you for the opportunity to provide an update on behalf of Central Coast Community Energy. My name is Sophia Schwartzky, and I serve as the Community Relations Manager for the Northern Region of Central Coast Community Energy, otherwise known as three C E. I'm joined today by three C E's Programs Analyst Paige Callahan. We are here to share highlights about three C E's recent activities, programs, and ongoing efforts to support your community. If you could advance the slide, please. Thank you. As you may know, three C E is the public agency that sources energy for the Central Coast. We work in partnership with P G and E, who manages the transmission and delivery of that energy to your homes and businesses. Three C E serves thirty cities and five counties. Today, three C E provides clean and renewable energy to one point two million people, which is about ninety four percent of eligible customers. Next slide, please. Three C E is working to deliver one hundred percent clean energy to our customers. Last year, we delivered enough renewable energy to power more than three hundred and fifty thousand homes. By doing so, we avoided carbon dioxide emissions equivalent to taking one hundred and five thousand gas-powered cars off the road for an entire year. Next slide, please. Three C E has contracts in place to supply sixty seven percent of our total load with renewable energy by October of twenty twenty eight, with additional contracts pending board approval that would increase this number. This puts us well ahead of state clean energy requirements. At three C E, we've received many questions about the role of battery storage in this energy transition. Um, and as we increase our supply of renewable energy, battery storage does play a critical role in making that energy reliable, affordable, and available when it's needed most. Next slide, please. Battery storage is essential for California's energy transition, and just as importantly, customer affordability. Batteries capture renewable energy when the sun is shining and the wind is blowing, then release it when demand is high and wind and solar power is not available. At the utility scale, they reduce fossil fuel reliance during peak hours, lowering electricity rates. For customers, home batteries provide backup power and store cheap renewable energy for use during expensive peak hours. Next slide, please. So quickly, I'd like to take a real-world example to demonstrate the value of battery storage. During Labor Day weekend of twenty twenty two, California issued its most recent flex alert, which is a statewide call to reduce electricity use during a major heat wave. So you might remember getting a text message asking you to reduce your energy usage. The graph you have in front of you shows the energy mix from that day. The red area represents fossil fuels, which made up the largest portion. The green shows renewables like solar and wind, which peaked during the day and then drop off sharply at sunset. But what I want to show you is the thin orange lines. At the bottom, you'll see batteries charging during daylight hours. At the top, those same batteries discharge energy back into the grid when it's needed most. Next slide, please. Next, I'd like to show you a chart of California's energy mix during a more recent heat wave. On July fourth of last year, despite another period of extremely high energy demand, there was no need for a flex alert to avoid blackouts. The graph tells the story. The green bar representing renewable energy grew taller as more solar came online. The red bar representing fossil fuels became smaller. But most notably, that orange battery bar more than tripled. Batteries charge during the day and discharge power during peak evening hours, providing critical support when it was needed most. And again, we did not need a flex alert to avoid blackouts. Next slide, please. We've heard from many community members with questions about the safety of utility-scale battery storage. So I'd like to take a moment to share a few key points. Um, first of all, three C E does not have any power purchase agreements with indoor battery facilities like Vistra's Moss Landing facility was. All of the battery storage projects that we support are containerized systems that include individual fire suppression units and must comply with the latest fire and building safety codes. Finally, battery system failure rates have dropped by ninety eight percent since twenty eighteen, even as global battery deployment has increased by twenty five thousand percent. Next slide, please. Three C E is investing in innovative energy storage technology. One example that I would like to highlight for you today is the Willow Rock Energy Storage Center. This project will use compressed air to power turbines and will be the largest compressed air project in the world. It will provide two hundred megawatts of power to three C E customers alone. Next slide, please. Our Tina Solar Plus Storage, Atlas Solar, and Victory Pass Solar Plus Storage are among the latest projects that three C E has invested in. Together, these projects will supply enough clean energy to power the homes of two hundred and sixty three thousand three C E customers. Next slide, please. Delivering renewable power is only part of three C E's mission. Equally important is connecting with the communities we serve. Our outreach team is active across the region. We sponsor local events, host webinars, and we lead workshops that raise awareness on our energy programs and actually inform the development of future energy programs. To better meet the needs of our diverse communities, three C E has hired additional bilingual staff. We've expanded our translated materials, and we've developed an action plan focused on serving underserved community members. Our customer service line now offers support in more than one hundred and fifty languages. Next slide, please. In addition to engaging our communities through outreach and education, three C E also provides direct support through a range of customer programs. These programs empower our customers to electrify their homes, vehicles, and businesses while saving money in the process. Our Electrify Your Ride program, for example, offers up to four thousand dollars towards the purchase of an electric vehicle. And there's also funding available for E V chargers and E V charger installation through that program. Additional programs help lower the cost of upgrading to electric appliances, installing battery storage, and advancing electrification in the agricultural sector. Next slide, please. Three C E also offers programs for member agencies like San Juan Batista to support electrifying your fleet and installing E V chargers. These initiatives include rebates that help offset the cost of replacing fleet vehicles and funding for electrification planning and infrastructure development. Our Reach Codes program also supports local efforts by offering technical assistance to city staff as they create and implement energy efficiency standards. Uh, so this year alone, three C E has three hundred thousand dollars allocated to the City of San Juan Batista. Next slide, please. Uh, since twenty eighteen, nearly seven thousand customers have participated in three C E's programs, putting more than eleven million dollars back into our community. Over four million dollars of that support went directly to underserved community members. Next slide, please. So this slide here highlights how San Juan Batista has participated in three C E's programs to date. So far, your community has received more than one hundred and forty thousand dollars in funding through programs like Plan Your Fleet, which is one of our member agency programs, Electrify Your Home, and the New Construction Electrification Program. I've included data from the City of Hollister as a benchmark to help put, um, the participation levels of San Juan Batista into context. Next slide, please. Before I conclude, I want to share a very brief legislative update. The federal mega bill known as H R one or the Big Beautiful Bill Act does impact three C E's customers. The bill eliminates federal tax credits for electric vehicles after September thirtieth and for home energy upgrades after December thirty first. Many of three C E's customers combine federal incentives with the rebates that three C E offers. So we are really encouraging those who are considering electrifying to do so now so that they can get the maximum and maximum incentive from both three C E and federal tax credits. H R one also eliminates tax credits for utility-scale solar and wind projects that have not broken ground by twenty twenty seven. These projects are cheaper and quicker to build than natural gas alternatives. And without federal support, they may become more difficult to develop, which could lead to higher energy costs for our customers over time. To help address this, three C E is supporting the Pathways Initiative, otherwise known as S B five forty, which would create a regional energy market across California and other western states. This market would enable us to sell excess renewable energy produced during the day, reducing emissions across the region. And it would generate nearly eight hundred million dollars in savings for Californians. Uh, looking ahead, advancing legislation to improve resource adequacy trading presents another opportunity for three C E to lower costs for customers. Next slide, please. So that is all that I have for you today. Um, if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them now. And I also have my contact information available on the slide here. Um, thank you again for your time this evening, and I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that presentation. Uh, Councilmember Aranda.
Thank you for the presentation. No questions.
Thank you, Councilmember Frielz. Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
Thank you very much for the presentation. We appreciate you coming out. Thanks Paige for backup support. Thanks Sophia. Have a great night. Thank you.
Uh, do we have any public comment on this?
No hands raised on Zoom and nobody in chambers, Madam Mayor.
Thank you very much. Our next presentation is the San Juan School Construction Project. And Superintendent Barb Dilvargo is here.
Tonight, yes. I have a team with me that I'd like to introduce. To my right is Principal Ethan Stocks, Principal of San Juan School. Uh, a graduate of San Juan School is my chief business official, Daniel Ornellis. What year?
Twenty-two thousand six.
Two thousand six. Wow, okay. Don Denegus, CEO of Solar side Solutions, is our right hand, our left hand, our project manager on many of the projects we do. Clean. So, let's see if this works.
Thank you. Welcome all.
Yeah. Thank you for having us. You know, we've wanted to come for a while. And this is the beginning of my fourth year as superintendent. And from the very beginning, imagining this school has been on my radar. And I, I think this is much more than a conversation with you about the physical nature of the school. I think you have to start by understanding what the, what the nature of a school is for a community. And we sit at the head of the Alameda, so it's very important to San Juan Batista. And it may be a place that many of you either had children graduate from, perhaps you attended. I won't quiz everybody to find that out, but you know, we've had some very famous individuals, Robert Rivas being one of them, the speaker, uh, who's a graduate of our school. So when you go to reimagine and design and build a school, you have to understand that there's history there. There are people who have ideas about what the new school should look like. And so for a couple of the first years of my tenure, we spent a lot of time having town halls and talking with people and engaging in some design processes for what the school would look like. We are finally at the, at the point where you can start to see something happening on the grounds. So let's see. Jose? Maybe you need to open the door some. No. Work before. I need to have blown to them. So the, the very first slide is going to be the front image on the notebook that's being passed around. And I'm showing that to you as the first slide in this presentation because we're trying to manifest what, what it's actually going to look like, right? Because it's going to be a two-year project. And it's, it's an image, I think, that blends nicely in the community. Uh, there was some inspiration from the Windmill Shopping Center across the street. Let's see if that works now. There we go. There we go. Okay. So this will be the front of the school, um, and we'll point out some of the structures as we go. Want to talk with you a little bit about the uh scope and the timeline of the project. And actually, it's advanced one slide too many. There we go. As I said, this is a two-year project. Um, right now, twenty-five, twenty-six, we are in the demolition stage. We've torn down um, a good number of the classrooms, getting ready for the modular classrooms that are going to be built this fall. In fact, we're taking a little road trip up to uh the factory to see the classrooms that are being built. Um, they will be ready hopefully by April, May to be installed on the property. Um, and in between this installation, we're preparing the site. We're doing a lot of underground utility work and getting ready to place the buildings. Um, also during this first year, the administration building where Principal Stocks holds forth, um, will be demolished and a new administration building built so that he can occupy that for the fall of two thousand twenty-six. The second year of the project, we are going to be demolishing and replacing the NPR, NPR stones for the multi-purpose room, and that's where uh kids receive their lunch from the school cafeteria where you can hold assemblies. And a unique feature of this, if you've looked through the packet, is a portion of the large building that's going to have a roll-up door so that productions, theatrical productions can be put on there and spill out into an outdoor arena. Um, the uh gift of our current principal is he's a theater major. We have one of El Teatro Campesino's members on staff, Cristal Avila. And we have a partnership with El Teatro Campesino. So we see this as a benefit for the community that they'll be able to partner with us. Uh, our students will have been uh putting on productions, and this will be an area that can be useful for the community and for our own students to have audiences, whether indoors or outdoors as well. Um, at that same time, when that is being demolished and rebuilt, uh, in that neck of the woods is also the preschool. Uh, we are the only unified preschool through grade twelve school district in all of San Benito County. So we, both of our K eights have preschools. Um, and the K eights and as well, obviously, Anzar High. Preschool will be rebuilt, and then a library building will also be built. The parts of the campus that are not going to be touched are the middle school and the gymnasium. Um, and they have been re-renovated, freshened up, so that they will blend nicely with the rest of the campus. We anticipate that this project, we hope that this project will be done the fall of two thousand twenty-seven. So again, the timeline, right now, we're into site preparation, the demolition of the classrooms. Uh, one of the surprises along the way was dealing with um, a water table that was higher than we originally had anticipated. And so that was a delay that caused us to uh work on some redesigns, extra expense to build what's called a mat slab to put these classrooms on top of. Um, the uh placement of the classrooms, as I said, is going to occur during the spring and uh hopefully ready for the fall of two thousand twenty-six. Um, the second year, again, we're replacing the NPR, replacing the preschool. And in the NPR is our central food kitchen as well. I don't know if you knew that, but all of the food for all of our school sites is prepared in the San Juan School. And then it is farmed out to the other two school buildings. We are shifting our food service model to a hubs and spokes model where we're going to be doing much more farm-to-table cooking, fresh foods, getting away from prepackaged, heated up kinds of uh food. So redesigning this kitchen is going to be very important. And we've hired a new child nutrition uh coordinator and a new cook who's going to be leading the way together on this venture. Um, so we're very excited about that. I have some photos for you of some of the demolition. Um, pretty amazing. Those are some classrooms being tore down. I don't know how much you can see from the street, so this is probably pretty stunning to look at, right? Lot of big equipment back there. I think there's some young kids who like, you know, heavy equipment, who are really into watching some of this. Although a lot of it happened in the summer, to be honest. Here's some underground utility work going on. Again, to see it becoming a clear plain. And then, of course, is protecting now the construction site from, you know, for the children. So there's a lot of fencing now and some creative pathways that we had to create for the kids to be able to move around on the site. So why has it taken this long? I think it's important for you to understand some of the ins and outs of a project like this. First thing that we had to do was really talk with teachers, talk with parents, families, the community about what are the educational needs? What do we want for our children? What, this is an opportunity that being so close to the San Andreas Fault has provided us by being able to access some of that funding. What do we want to do in the creation of this new site for our kids? And so that was uh probably a good year and a half, two years of, of gathering some of that information and creating a document, the educational spec document that we would give to the architects, who then would use to create some ideas for the spaces. And we went back and forth in many different meetings. We also had to look at our demographics. And I think we're going to be doing another demographic study just to be sure that we know how many kids are eventually going to be coming to us with any new housing developments in the area. And of course, the school district has a facilities master plan, so you, you're always looking at that and updating it to make sure that you're addressing what um, needs have been identified. Then, of course, there's a whole slew of approvals. So if any of you have been involved in any of those kinds of processes, you know that you've got to get the state of California to approve, uh, the CDE, California Department of Ed, has to approve your plans. Uh, Department of State Architecture, DSA, is almost a a word that we've used way too many times. They have to approve every piece of the plan. OPSC, the Office of Public School Construction, they're involved in the funding approvals. And then there's all the regulatory agencies. And of course, all of these things carry fees. Like they carry not only timelines and back and forth and approval processes and regulations, but they also want to collect a fee for everything. Um, and so, you know, we've had biologists on the site looking for red-toed frogs and salamanders. They have found none. Um, we've, you know, gone through what we needed to do for the Department of Toxic Substances Control. Uh, we've done our work looking for cultural resources. This takes time. This takes money, but it's required for public schools, and I think probably for some groups that you're involved in too. Um, we also needed to identify funding. So prior to my getting here, the community was very supportive and voted for Measure M and Measure O. Measure O being primary funding source for San Juan School. That was back in two thousand twenty. And unfortunately, this is two thousand twenty-five, and costs have gone way up. So knowing that we also had some projects to do at Aromas and at Anzar, and that we would need some additional funding for San Juan School, uh, very grateful that the community supported Measure D last November. So this, this was an important step for us to make sure that we had the funding to complete the project. Want to talk with you a little bit about something that you might care about, and that is, you know, our, our school and its site is situated on the Alameda in a place where the town takes advantage of it, needs to take advantage of it. We support that. But during this two-year period of time, there's going to be a little bit of some uncomfortableness. Uh, the soccer field will be usable, but the parking lot there may be needed at times for staging, and we will work with you to give you advance notice on that. We know that many of the events that happen in town need that parking there, but it's sometimes that's going to be not available because of the construction needs. Uh, the solar panel parking lot is going to be closed for the duration of the project. The Nyland and School parking lot is reduced, but it is available. The community access to the basketball court, and where's John Freeman when I need to give him this message? Um, the basketball court and the pickleball courts are unfortunately going to be unavailable until the end of the project. The playground is unavailable until the end of the project. Uh, and our one request that we need to work with you on or the food bank is, is that we've, we've identified that the lines that they have there are getting in the way of some construction project access, so we're maybe hoping that we can move that if possible. So when we finally open the school, hopefully two years from now, I think there's going to be not only great value to our students who are going to walk in and have probably just amazement on their face. This is going to be a beautiful school. It's going to have incredible opportunities for them. But I think also for the community, it's going to be a beautiful entrance to, at the Alameda. It's going to be a site where we have Facilitron on our website, so the community can go online and identify parts of our facility that they'd like to rent or to use. And certainly, we welcome nonprofits particularly to do so. Um, and during construction, there'll be some limited access, but you know, there are still some aspects of it that during construction are useful. Also, as I mentioned, that NPR building, I think, is going to be a beautiful space for the community if it needs to, you know, work with us to be able to hold large events. Um, and certainly, our kiddos are going to, you know, embrace the arts that are really in the roots of this community and have opportunities for music, for art, for theater productions, et cetera. So, in conclusion, I would just say that we're extremely excited. It's finally started. I feel like baby is starting to be born, and you can see some evidence of that. But, you know, this could be a long birth. I mean, a lo, a long uh session in the maternity ward. Uh, fall of two thousand twenty-seven, hopefully. Do you have uh any questions for me or for any of my team?
Thank you very much. We appreciate that presentation. Councilmember Aranda.
Uh, great presentation. Thank you for the update. Um, amazing work. I know that takes a, that's a huge undertaking, and it's, I'm so happy to see that we're finally making progress. So, um, congrats. And um, um, I know the parking lot situation might be a little complicated, but I'm sure we as a city can now work something out and, and get that going. But great work. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Frielz.
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
It's a huge project, and I just want to say my eighth grade class was the first full year of eighth grade that graduated from that school.
Oh, terrific.
So, little tear shed.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it looks great.
Yeah.
Good luck.
Thank you. Well, you have to come back. We'll give you a special tour. Didn't, didn't your daughter graduate from there?
Yep.
Yep. Any other family members? Uh, was I gonna need the?
Yeah.
Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia. Yeah, I think it is.
I was curious, but I had mentioned some
Yeah, the, the library, um, I don't know if you noticed.
I was, I'm super curious if there's like, what, what, you know, couldn't mention everything in a quick snapshot, but. That's awesome. Yeah, I'm tipping my hand a little bit here, but super interested in any STEM activities and or programs that may, may happen. I'm a robotics engineer. I'm a robotics engineer. Yeah, I, I have also, little plug, 25-year veteran of mentoring competition high school robotics. So any programs that we have going on, I'm really interested in those kinds of things.
Thank you for volunteering. Thank you very much. That's amazing. I was at a, a presentation at Pisinas Ranch about food sourcing and, and organic and locally sourced. And super excited to hear that San Juan School is doing that for all the schools. That's awesome. Quick question, how many Padres asked for a piece of concrete? You could have sold that, man. How, they're funding your project right there.
I had an idea to salvage some of the roof tiles, because they had like this imprint of a dove on it. And we thought that was unique until somebody sent us, you can go on a website, and these are, I guess, common tiles. You can buy it over California for red-roofed.
Again, you could have funded your project. Nice. Remember that. Yeah, a, a big shout out to all the former Padres and welcome to the Cougars? Mountain Lions. Thank you. Thank you for that. The Mountain Lions, yeah. Very much looking forward to it, and I appreciate the gateway to, to San Juan Batista. It's going to be a beautiful piece of art. Yeah, thank you. Good luck. Have fun working in that not office that you don't have anymore. Thank you all very much for the presentation. Do we have any public comment on this?
No speaker cards received and no hands raised on Zoom.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Thank you again very much. We appreciate the presentation. Good luck. Sell tiles.
I had no idea.
I had no idea.
I don't know what I did.
There we go. Awesome. There we are. Thank you. Next on the agenda, public comment.
Mayor, I have, I didn't see Ida's.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sure if she, it was public comment for, for the school.
Ida, hi, welcome. Is this public comment on the school?
Um, kind of. It's actually public comment for the school and then just in general.
Okay, yeah, you can start us off in public comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes, and there will be no back and forth with the council?
Okay. I just wanted to, to say, you know, that we are supporting San Juan Elementary School, and we wanted to invite the council, the community, and the residents that on this Saturday, we're doing, we're hosting a community food drive to help support the teachers and the students. As many of you know, federal budget cuts, children may lose access to free breakfast and lunches, and that many of our teachers are actually taking money out of their own pockets to provide snacks for the kids who come to school hungry. So on Saturday, August 23rd, 10 to 3 p.m., we are going to be at the Mission Market, and we're asking the community to donate nutritious, single-serve snacks, and those are going to be delivered to San Juan Elementary School, only to San Juan Elementary School, as that is our choice to provide for. So, and if you have any questions, just give me a call, 408-427-5767. But yeah, we want to support San Juan Elementary teachers and students. That was my public comment.
Thank you. Do we have any public comment in chambers?
First up, Ramona Hill, followed by Georg, Georgian? Sorry, I can't read the handwriting.
I couldn't read it. It's my fault.
Thank you. Hi, welcome.
Hi, thank you. Good evening. I'm Ramona Hill, resident of San Juan here and founder of Credo Studio. Esteemed mayor and council members, thank you for this chance to speak tonight. I understand that as a part of the city's reorganizational efforts, you will soon be restructuring the fee schedule. I'm here to contribute my thoughts about this topic. As you may know, I'm in leadership for many of our community events, such as Arts in the Park for our city library, A Tree For Thee for Discover San Juan Batista, and the Service Club, and the Madala Community Art Project for Credo Studio. So I have an inside view from a few perspectives and a history of working with the city on community events. To me, it appears that at this time, two categories exist for event applications. One is commercial and one is nonprofit. I would like to point out that more categories of activity exist. Notably, in our community, a category that I would call non-commercial. These are events that have no profit motive and are presented for community enrichment. They add life and value to our community calendar. The events I mentioned above are examples. My suggestion for the new fee schedule is that you create fee tiers that reflect the activity of the community. Another way that the city could support the efforts of the community is through local discounts and waivers. As a specific example, I'd like to point out that for the Madala Project this year, the sum of the $200 application fee and the, the new public works fee of $245 equaled over 20% of my entire budget. And the only way I could afford the new public works fee was to decrease my artist's pay. Foundational to the mission of the San Vino Arts Council, who funded the project this year, is to financially benefit artists, and that is my intention as well. I do hope the city is interested in supporting community events. We need your help. Thank you.
Thank you. And a reminder to all to speak into the microphone and, and make sure that the green light is on. Thank you for that, Ramona.
Hi, George Diaz, San Juan resident. I'm here tonight to try to keep peace and not start a war in regards to the Luck Library. I'm here to remind the old timers in San Juan and inform the new people in San Juan in regards to the will. It's very specific on what can and cannot be built there. It is very specific on the names that can be used there. And the reason I think this is important tomorrow, next week, next year, or whatever, somebody comes along and says, we want to make a donation to the city, and then they find out, well, wait a minute, when we're six feet under and gone for a few years, the city's going to give us the finger and do whatever they want with, with our wills. I don't think it's right, and that's what I'm saying. I think we ought to stop it now before it gets out of hand. The original plan was it's a station, of course, the library, of course, and the museum was a completely separate building. And those meetings were held in the original council chambers back in the back room where all the offices are now. The new plans have the museum as a gas station, the library, and new community use building, more or less combined, well, it is combined. Well, I'm sorry, folks. I'm sorry, folks, but a community building, we have a community hall a block away. How many build, how many community buildings does San Juan need? I don't think it's right. That should be the museum. The museum that's proposed and the gas station, I'm sorry, believe it or not, I'm with the Historical Society tonight, speaking for them, believe that or not. That museum, you put two glass display places in there, and it's packed, it's done. They need room for the merchandise they have now and the future. That museum, coming from me making stuff up, a, a greeting center, whatever. But that community use building should be the museum done. As far as the fire truck goes, the fire truck house, what the city's done to that fire truck is disgraceful. And believe it or not, there's still a few, there's still a few of us that fought fires on that truck. And we really get upset when we see it. Anyway, with that being said, if you're going to do that to the fire truck, everybody forgets about the eagle. Get the eagle back. Get the eagle in there, too. We never gave that to the state. We never sold it to the state. We had no place to keep it, so the state offered, or we asked them, whatever, to store it. They've just been storing it. If we went to ask them for it now, they'd probably say, no. But if we had a nice building, hey, who knows what they do? And the last thing is, we've been working on this for Jackie Scott, 40 years, 50 years? 50 years? Where I'm going with this, what's another year or two? I learned this at a meeting last week. You build a building as a museum. I have three more minutes coming from back there.
Thank you.
If they're built.
Sorry. You cannot speak any longer for, for those three minutes? Another person would have to come up.
When the law change?
And do three minutes.
When the law change? How long? When I was sitting there, we had to let him speak.
Apologies.
Nope, the law's, he's going by what you said. He knows what the law is, but he won't speak up. You said you were speaking for the mayor, not for the law.
Thank you.
Stephanie Korea. Followed by Donna.
Hi, welcome.
I just want to reiterate what George said, and I'm deferring to the information that was distributed to you earlier. And I appreciate you just going ahead and looking at that and taking it seriously. I remember when that letter came to the city and how excited everybody was about it because the cement plant closed then, and that was a very, very negative time. And we really have not recovered from that. And so I'd really like us to at least pay attention to her will. And I've documented in there all the other gifts that she did give the city. So anything you can do to, to honor that, I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Donna. Higgins.
Thank you.
Myra Bohorkis.
Hi, welcome. Can you make sure that the green lit is, light is lit?
Yes.
Perfect. Good evening, mayor and council members. My name is Myra Bohorkis. I'm the owner of MB Photography, which is also known as MB Studios. I've been a business owner in downtown for over a year now. In that time, I've not had one person from the councils to stop by my business, welcome me, or to see how you could support for what I'm doing for this community. The only time I hear from the city is when you want a fee. That's not leadership, that's gatekeeping. Our downtown is fading, there's empty storefronts, quiet streets. And yet, when merchants like me step up and we create events that draw hundreds of people from here and beyond that bring life, revenue, and excitement back to our town, instead of a thank you, we get roadblocks, red tape, and another bill. We are not your competition, we are your partners. Without thriving businesses, there is no thriving downtown. And without thriving downtown, the city will continue to die one empty shop at a time. I'm asking you to see the bigger picture. Support the people who are willing to roll up their sleeves and do the work of revitalizing this town. Work with us instead of against us. Because the truth is, we all say we want the same, the same thing. It's San Juan Batista that is alive, vibrant, and worth visiting. So it's time to prove it. If you can't stand with the people trying to keep this town alive, then you're standing in the way of it. If the merchants give up, then downtown dies. The question is, will you help us save it or watch it disappear? You have the power to work with us to keep it alive. So I'm asking if you'll work with us or against us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Bill Adams. Thank you. Welcome, Mr. Adams.
City council members, staff, Mayor Jordan, thank you for the few minutes to address you. This evening, I'm here to ask your help. On January 21st, you had created a resolution 2025-02. This was created to improve public safety and improve egress from our driveway on Second Street. The line of sight, which was, should have been completed, was considered to be absolutely minimum by Doug Pike, city engineer. The safety risk to pedestrians and our degree of liability still continues. Would you please consider responding to the letters that we've sent on this resolution? And I, I do want to add that Mayor Jordan caught me when I came in this evening and mentioned that the mail has been interrupted with all the work you've been doing. So I'll consider that as well. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Jennifer Clark.
Hi, good evening.
Hi, welcome.
Hi, I just wanted to introduce myself. So I'm the new owner of The Hideaway, formerly known as Bear's Hideaway. And Lori, I can't see very good, but I think Lori is on Zoom. Yeah, so we've done, we've had a good time getting this transition going. And I'm almost kind of at the end and I think ready to open up by September. And I just wanted to say hello and introduce myself. And also quickly, just say, because of the robotics thing that you mentioned, I am in agriculture, that's my background, and so very interested in ag technology. And actually hosted an ag tech day here for the industry in, in Hollister, San Juan Batista area. So anyway, if there's, if anyone wants to talk about robotics, agriculture, beer and wine, we'll be around in September.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Joshua Britton. Hi, Josh, welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor and council. Appreciate you having me here. And it's honestly been kind of an honor getting to do it with y'all. y'all. So my name is Joshua Britton. I'm just a resident over in Hollister, but I've been getting a little bit more active in the community here and had a quick thing I'd like to say. So, good evening, everyone. I've lived in San Benito County long enough to see San Juan Batista's vibrant heart slowly fade. Once bustling with local shops, lively festivals, and a tight-knit community spirit, our town now faces challenges of empty storefronts, quieter streets, and businesses struggling to stay afloat. It breaks my heart to see this gem lose its shine, but I believe we can bring it back. Through community, through community collaboration and my own marketing efforts, I'm committed to revitalizing San Juan Batista. By promoting our unique business, historic charm, and welcoming spirit, we can draw visitors and locals alike back to our streets. My work focuses on showcasing what makes our town special. Its history, its people, its potential. I'm partnering with local businesses, owners, organizing events, and leveraging marketing to spread the word far and wide. Together, we can build a thriving San Juan Batista where every business can succeed and our community prospers. Let's unite, share our passion, and make our town shine. Thank you for your support.
Thank you very much.
No other speaker cards received, Madam Mayor. And seeing no other speaker, hands raised on Zoom.
Thank you, thank you all for your participation. We appreciate you. Thank you. I'd like to now close the city council meeting and open up the San Juan Batista Finance Authority Meeting. This is on public finance authority and the consideration of a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the Series Twenty Twenty Five A and Series Twenty Twenty Five B wastewater revenue bonds and approval of corresponding financing documents in connection with the San Juan Batista to Hollister Force Main Development Project. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the public. Just briefly, I'm going to introduce Dmitry Semenov, who's the Principal at Reginald Municipal Strategies, and Cameron Wiest from Wiest Law to give the presentation tonight.
Thank you, welcome, Dmitry and Cameron.
Hello, can you hear me?
You're good, thank you.
All right. Mayor, members of the council, good evening. Will I be sharing the screen or will the city be sharing the screen?
You have co-host rights.
Okay, so it says host disabled participating screen sharing.
All yours.
Yep. Launch the presentation. Okay, are we good?
Yes.
Okay. So tonight, we're going to talk about USDA financing for the wastewater system compliance project. And before we get into some, into the details, let me remind everybody of the history of the project. So the project is the pipeline to convey the city's wastewater to the Hollister's Regional Treatment Plant. That project was required by the EPA and Department of Water Resources to bring the city's wastewater system into compliance with the permit requirements. Once everything was said and done, the project budget came to about twenty-five million dollars. And that's a big nut to crack for a city of only two thousand residents. So we went on a, what now is almost a five-year journey, to make sure that the project is funded with the least amount of impact to the city's ratepayers. So to do that, we tried to get as many outside resources that the residents don't have to pay for, specifically in the form of grants and contributions from the county and other, other types of funding, and limit how much of the debt the city needs to take on and how much of the reserves and revenues are used, you know, to fund the project. So out of the twenty-five million dollars, ten million dollars were funded, ten and a half million dollars were funded through different types of grants. The San Benito County contributed four million dollars, and the city's STBG funds contributed another four hundred and ten thousand dollars. So in the end, we only had to borrow ten million to two hundred and sixty-eight thousand dollars from the, and the decision was made to borrow the money from the USDA. So why was the USDA the preferred financing program? There were several, actually several reasons. They offered the longest term, forty years, which is actually very much needed to reduce how much we're, the city's paying in annual debt service. So the longer the term, the smaller the annual payments. The loan also came with a very low interest rate of two point seventy-five percent, fixed for the entire forty-year period. So that's, that's a very favorable interest rate. It's really, at that time, was, even at that time, it was impossible to get that rate from the markets or from the banks. And finally, as a part of the package, the USDA came with six and a half million dollars in grants, in addition to the ten million in loan. So that helped reduce as much as possible how much the city had to borrow to fund the project. So that was the decision and the history of the project, why we chose to go with the USDA loan. So what you have in front of you, and Cameron, the bond counsel, will talk more about the specifics of the agreements, is basically two separate USDA loans, one for seven million dollars and one for three million, two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. And the way it's broken, broken up, it's because the USDA does not go over seven million dollars per specific loan. So both loans have the forty-year term. Both loans have two point seventy-five percent interest rate, and the estimated annual debt service on both of these loans is about the four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars per year. So this was the most cost effective way to finance the project. And the only thing is with the USDA, they don't fund construction. So the city actually had to go out, and a few years back, back in twenty twenty-three, we did an RFP for an interim construction financing line of credit. And the first foundation bank was the lender that helped fund the construction of the project. And now that the project construction is complete and we're almost done meeting all the requirements of the USDA, we're getting ready to fund the permanent USDA loans that will pay off the construction line of credit. Okay, so in terms of the next steps, tonight, we're looking to, to get your approval to adopt the resolutions, approving the financing and authorizing the signing of the documents. And in a few weeks, sometime in September of twenty twenty-five, the goal is to close the USDA loans and pay off the interim construction line of credit. So with that, if you have any questions for me, I'm all ears, or we can turn it over to Cameron, and he can walk everybody through the documents that, that are in front of you.
Thank you for that. Councilmember Aranda.
No questions, thank you for your presentation.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels.
No questions, I trust Dmitry.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you for the explanation as to why we arrived here, and I'm sure the public appreciates. Thank you, Dmitry.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sebastian.
I'm going to take up a little bit more time. Do you offer any other services? I've, I've just been, before I was on the council and listening to you explain things and, and being here, the way you've shepherded not only us, but our public through, I mean, ten million dollars is a scary number, even in California with high costs of everything where you can, you know, get a mortgage for a ten million dollar house. It's for a small town, it's a very, it's a nerve-wracking number to be going through, and I've just can't speak more highly of how you've, you've shepherded us through this. And I know, you know, a lot of that was kind of out of your control, but the way you've walked us through this in terms of, even when it wasn't the best news, even though most of the time you deliver in great news, the way you've explained it all out, it's just made us, made it, made it easier for us to, to walk through this project.
Yeah, I concur. We got an inch just on this, an inch of, of paper, a ream of paper just on this. And I kept looking at it going, wow, what are we doing? And you summarize it in five minutes. Well done. And most importantly, I appreciate that you actually gave us alternatives. One, we can accept this, or two, we can provide alternative directions on our own. Thanks, thanks for that. I don't think we've ever seen that. But yeah, this was absolutely amazing, and you did a phenomenal job. I had lots of questions about some of the, the language, and it was very easily explained on who the who the board of directors were. But thanks for that, I'm now a chair of a board. Do we have any public comment?
No speaker cards in chambers and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Back to the council, questions? Councilmember Aranda?
No comments again, thank you so much.
Councilmember Freels.
No questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, you, Mayor, and Protem Mayor Sebastian, and Liz, I believe, are the principals.
And, yes, among others, yes.
And is it John Giffen or our city manager?
Yes.
Okay. Is someone going to be explaining the documents? I heard that, or are we, okay.
Sure. Cameron, can you chime in now and explain what these, what this inch of paper actually says? I mean, thank you, Dmitry, for your explanation, but there, there is a lot of meat to this matter.
Yes, good evening, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Yeah, Cameron Wiest, Wiest Law Firm, your bond counsel for this project. And as Dmitry said, we've been working on this for several years with the city. This is sort of a culmination of the, of the, the takeout financing with USDA to take out the interim financing that was done, what are affectionately known as bands or bond anticipation notes from a legal perspective. So this evening, you've got several steps, as you know, you're now meeting as the authority board for the public financing authority. The reason for that is just simply that we needed legally, under California law, you need a counterparty to the documents so that it's all city-related and not outside of your control, which is really important. And so you're going to take action here on the bond documents. But as a summary of what you're going to be approving, there's, there's several key documents, they all have to do with the flow of funds, in essence. So to simplify the matter, you're having to enter into this installment sale process. So there's an installment sale agreement. That agreement is again between the city council, the city, I should say, and the authority. The authority is sort of acting as a seller of the project, even though title is held with the city in terms of the wastewater treatment facilities for this particular project. So the authority, being you, the city really holding, wearing the hats of the authority, control your destiny here by allowing yourselves to vote as the seller to sell it to the city council. Again, this is a legal requirement under California law. And the city council, if, if, when you convene a city council and assuming you approve these documents as the board for the PFA, once the city council approves, that you're going to be the counterparty to that agreement that says, yes, we're going to buy it back, as Dmitry said, for about four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars between the Series A, Series B installment sale agreements, for that amount of money broken out on a, on a pro-rata basis between the two issuances. And therefore, those revenues from the city then are being pledged to the authority. But in between that process is an intercept, otherwise known as an assignment agreement. So you're going to assign those revenues to, to a third party manager of this process, which you, you're going to dub your city manager as the sort of intermediary that operates as a trustee for this process to, to take these funds and deliver them to USDA. Now, again, this is, I know it's complex, but this is what's required under California law. This is standard procedure. So yeah, tonight is just a night to sort of lay this out on the table a little bit and answer any questions you might have. But in essence, that's really the summary of the installment sale process and how we get monies from point A to point B and then to point C, which is the, the lender USDA who's purchasing these bonds. There is another couple of documents that are needed to control the flow of funds, one being, and a primary document is the trust agreement. So both the Series A, Series B trust agreement, and those are to really protect the funds so that the lender USDA in this case knows what's happening underneath all this and what the promises are and what the remedies might be in case of non-payment. So that they have a good idea on a legal basis what they're investing in. And again, these are standard covenants that are found within the document. They deal with prepayment provisions, reserve funds, risk, you know, risk elements in terms of how you're going to mitigate risk through insurance or other means, as well as the default remedies, as I mentioned. So the, then I mentioned prepayment, there are no prepayment penalties in this case, which is another nice reason to work with USDA in addition to the forty-year term and the low interest rate, so that's in the city's favor. But the trust agreement handles a lot of those promises and terms and conditions for the underlying structure. Probably too voluminous to get into all the details this evening. So again, you retain our firm, we do these things daily, weekly, it's our, it's our job to protect the city and to lay out a structure that is best management practices in the state of California, and actually under federal law as well, because these are securities, after all, that USDA is purchasing. So we want to make sure the city's protected and the flow of funds are going to do what they say they're going to do, and that we're protecting the city to the best that we can. Also, there is a purchase offer that will be entertained by the city shortly. Once USDA signs off on the entire package, they're going to be submitting an offer to purchase these bonds to your city manager and to the city. This resolution, these resolutions are giving your city manager and Mayor and other key staff members some autonomy to go ahead and do some of the actions that are needed to close this out at the time of closing. So there's going to be quite a few steps that we still need to undertake that we do not have a line of sight on. Again, this is common because of the way that USDA operates. We do not have control over such an autonomous agency, and so we have to take their lead. But in terms of what is in front of you this evening, these are all vetted with USDA and their Office of General Counsel, so they have been seen several times. We've received comments several times. So what you're looking at is a very near final version, but if there are any additional changes that are non-material, then you're designating those authorized representatives to go ahead and take the actions that are needed to close this out in a timely manner. When I say material, if there's anything material, it needs to come back to the city council for, for approval. There, there's also what's called an irrevocable payment instruction document in the agenda packet, and that's really to control the flow of funds for this offering to USDA so that when they make their investment for that, for the total amount, those monies are going to be directed and siloed and sequestered solely for the benefit of prepaying those bond anticipation notes at closing or as close to closing as possible. So those are the documents that you have this evening in front of you. I know there's a lot there, a lot to unpack. However, I hope that I was able to cover some of it in terms of just the high-level picture, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any, any further clarification, Councilor Morris Lopez? Okay, I just, nothing else. Mayor Protem Sebastian, thank you. I had nothing substantive.
nothing else. Uh, Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian, thank you. Um, I had nothing substantive for this. Um, I think all my questions were answered. Um, thank you. Councilmember Freels, you're good. Perfect. Um, okay, back to the council as a whole. Um, I need a motion to can uh, to approve the resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the Series 2025A and Series 2025B wastewater revenue bonds and approval of corresponding financing documents in connection with the San Juan Baptista to Hollister Force Main Development Project.
So moved.
Thank you very much.
I'll second it.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian, seconded by Councilmember Freels. May I have a roll call, please?
Boardmember Aranda?
Yes.
Boardmember Freels?
Yes.
Boardmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sebastian?
Yes.
Chair Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, okay, that adjourns the San Juan Baptista Public Finance Authority meeting. Thank you, board members. Uh, I'd like to reconvene the city council meeting now. Uh, action items, uh, number six. Consideration of resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of the Series 2025A and 2025B wastewater revenue bonds. And approval corresponding financing documents in connection with the San Juan Baptista to Hollister Force Main Development.
Thank you, Mayor. Like to reintroduce Dimitri Sumanoff.
Welcome, welcome, Dimitri.
To introduce this item.
Uh, good to be back. Um, there is really no changes to anything that we've discussed now, um, uh, because there's two parties to the agreements. Uh, one on the on the authority side and one on the city side. Um, that's the continuation of the prior discussion. Cameron, do you have anything else to add?
No, no, I think this is, uh, you summed it up, Dimitri. Thank you. I I would add that the second resolution that's on the agenda for consideration, the first one does specifically uh, pertain to the documents and it directly mirrors what was done at the authority level. Um, the second one is a uh, a resolution that is required by USDA. It is, um, I don't want to say it's a form document, but uh, what we had done for the city in this regard is put the city's resolution on top of the USDA. They call them bulletin, but they're really uh, a a type of resolution that the USDA wants. So by adopting the second resolution tonight, you're in essence wrapping your resolution over the top of the USDA's required resolutions, and you're going to have the ability to have um jurisdiction to go ahead and proceed on those, and USDA will accept that as a as an approval of their resolutions in proper form and substance. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the public?
No speaker cards received and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Aranda?
No questions. Thank you, um, Dimitri, and thank you, Cameron.
Councilmember Freels?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
No questions.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
No questions.
Thank you. I have no further questions. Um, call for a motion to approve a resolution approving the form of the trust agreements, installments, sale agreements, assignment agreements, irrevocable payment instructions, and USDA purchase offer. Collectively, the financing documents and authorizing execution and delivery of the Series 2025A and 2025B wastewater revenue bonds, collectively the bonds. You have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you.
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Aranda, seconded by Councilmember Freels. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Uh, number two, approval resolution approving and adopting the USDA RUS Bulletin 1780-27 Loans Resolution, which require, which are required by the United States Department of Agricultural USDA in order to close on the bonds. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you. Uh, may I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Uh, motion made by Councilmember Morris Lopez, seconded by Councilmember Aranda. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Action item B, League of California Cities Voting Delegate, uh, delegate, a voting delegate and alternate for the League of California Cities Annual Conference and Expo, October 8th through the 10th, 2025. City Clerk.
So every year, the League of California Cities um, convenes a member-driven uh, general assembly at the League of California Cities Annual Count Conference, which is uh, um, scheduled for October 8th through the 10th at um, at the Long Beach Convention Center. So the league is asking for um, the city council to uh, appoint a voting delegate and a alternate. Um, and this person would be attending the conference as well.
Uh, thank you. Uh, questions from the council? Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, no questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels, Councilmember Morris Lopez, Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian, thank you. Um, the one question I have is who from the council will be attending the conference?
None.
Okay. Uh, do we have any public comment? October 8th through the 10th.
No, no hands raised on the in cha, I mean, no speaker cards received in chambers, but I do have one hand raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Eddie Sanchez, you have three minutes.
Eddie, hi, welcome.
Hello, Council, Madam Mayor. Thank you so much for taking my call. Um, I think that Ms. Um, Councilman Jose Aranda would be a great fit to join that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Um, okay, back to the council. Uh, Councilmember Aranda?
If we have nobody, I'll go.
Councilmember Freels. Councilmember Morris Lopez.
I'll be at a medical conference.
Thank you. Uh, here Pro Tem Sebastian, uh, and I am, uh, I'm at Penn State football.
Dot went last year, right, Scott?
Yeah.
How was Long Beach?
Long Beach is great.
That's why I'm not going back.
Me too. Yeah, yeah.
But Long Beach is fun.
It is.
That's why you're going.
Okay, uh, so, um, uh, a motion to have uh, Councilmember Aranda as the um, delegate, and we don't have an alternate.
So moved.
Thank you.
I will second.
Thank you. Motion made by Councilmember Freels, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. Uh, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
No, just kidding. Yes.
Councilmember Freels?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
Yes.
And Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. And it is actually a really good conference. Thank you. We appreciate that. Uh, administrative report, uh, treasures report, Wendy?
Uh, good evening.
Sorry, and the monthly financial statements. Thank you. Sorry, go ahead.
Okay, um, you have in your pocket today the financial report for the uh, 12 months of the city's fiscal year ending June 30th. Under our general fund, we're ending the year. Uh, this is prior to audit, but at this time, we're showing 97% for the year-to-date in our general fund revenues. And our general fund expenditures are at 95% for the year-to-date. The net effect is a positive change in the general fund balance of $201,000. Under our water enterprise funds, the enterprise fund revenues are at 101% um, to budget, and the expenses are at 95%. The net effect is a positive change in the water enterprise fund of $922,000 for the year. The sewer enterprise fund revenues are running at 103% of the budget, and expenses are at 109%. The net effect is a positive change in the sewer enterprise fund for the year of $884,000.
Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the council? Uh, Councilmember Aranda?
Yeah, I have a quick question. I don't even know if this this even relates, but um, with our little water bill mishap, does this affect the way our budget is? Or is that completely separate?
That's completely separate. Then this is representing as at June 30th, and we, I did include the revenue from the mishap in this this uh, report that you have.
Got it. Thank you. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
Yeah, no questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Thank you. No question.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
No questions. Thank you.
Thank you. I I apologize for mine. I can, I don't know who One Workplace is.
One Workplace is our uh, furniture desks.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. My bad for not asking that earlier. Thank you. Questions, comments, concerns from the public?
No speaker cards received and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Back to the council. Councilmember Aranda?
Uh, thank you again. No, no, uh, no questions or comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Freels?
Nope, I'm good. Thank you.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
No questions.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian? Thank you, Wendy.
You're welcome.
Uh, consent agenda. Um, there are 11 items on the consent agenda. Would any of the council members wish to pull any of them for a separate vote and discussion? Seven. I apologize for that. There are seven items on the consent agenda. Would any members wish to pull one? Councilmember Aranda?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Freels?
No, thanks.
Councilmember Morris Lopez, Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian, I have none to pull. Do we have any from the public that would like to pull uh, one of the seven, any of the seven agenda items?
Uh, nobody coming up to the podium and no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve? Sorry, uh, the seven items on the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second and second that motion.
Thank you. Motion made by Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian, with seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aranda?
Yes.
Councilmember Freels? Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Do, do we need a quick break? We all good? Thank you. Uh, discussion items, discuss, discussion on the con, considering the establishment of a policy for city-sponsored events conducted by or in partnership with nonprofit organizations. Sorry, uh,
It's me. I'm, I'm
Thank you. City Manager Ashley Colick.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I too wish more members of the public had stayed uh, tonight for this discussion. Um, as you are all aware, we are um, working with a lot of nonprofits in the city who conduct quite a few important city events. Um, if they were to pull a permit, which is called a special events permit in the city, there is a fee associated with that. Um, earlier this year, we realized that in order to close the roads in the city, that really should be done by city staffers to make sure that, number one, the roads are closed correctly, and that, two, we protect the city uh, from liability. Um, and so tonight, we are proposing um, that the city co-sponsor events, and that there is a process by which that may happen, um, so that nonprofits in the city have an opportunity to ask the council for support, and we um, we bring you a full um, report on how much that would cost uh, the city in terms of its donation of staff time, uh, barricades, uh, and such. Um, and that we kind of work with our nonprofits in a way that supports um, the community, uh, and also um, highlights some of the really um, historic events that that have happened and that we want to continue to have.
Thank you for this. I really appreciate this. Councilmember Aranda?
Um, I think it's a, this is, we're headed in the right direction. Um, I'm a big proponent of having our city events. Um, I volunteer at a few of them. Um, you know, one thing I was looking at or thinking about is maybe getting a list of all the, all the events that we've done historically, maybe for the last three to five years, and making them city-sponsored events. And maybe we can probably take on some of those responsibilities, um, just like we did with the the rib cook-off. I know we had some issues there with the uh, ecology or um, services and whatnot. And because it was a city-sponsored event, we were able to get away with with certain fees or get things waived. So maybe perhaps that's something we look at um, um, to help these nonprofits out. But I'm huge on making sure that the local nonprofits that support this town and where the funds actually go back into this community are actually supported. Um, some of these events are very special um, to our community. One of them that's actually coming up is actually our our Christmas parade. And that's also in jeopardy as as of right now, just because we don't know what the fees are going to look like. Um, one other thing that I would like to look at, I know before you had just mentioned, Ashley, that um, we've kind of gone away from having any volunteers put up the barriers. Um, historically, we, the Rotary Club has had volunteers put that up, and then those fees waived. And I get that that is a liability on the city, but I wanted to see if maybe we could sit with our um, city attorney and see if that can be added into our our um, insurance for the city of somehow having volunteers do that, so that maybe that's one way to save on costs and not pass that back to um, some of the nonprofits in town. Um, and then also from public comment, um, you know, I did like the idea of having some kind of tier system of how we we look at at things. Um, so so either way, um, I I would like to see something then. Um, I know that our San Juan Antique Fair Festival didn't kick off this year, so that was a bummer. Um, and isn't that one of the things that we're known for? So it's kind of sad not to see um, those things kick off. And I know I we, I've gotten some heat just from walking around the town where, you know, people were kind of upset that this year it wasn't that great because we didn't, we had the garage sales, but we didn't have the actual festival. So, um, I think this is really, really important, especially when you're hearing a lot of the members of the public are saying that our town is is dying. So I would like to see all these events stay, and um, how can we support them through a city's perspective? That's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Freels.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, when Ashley first brought this forward and Roy, I was happy to hear it because I, you know, I like to see us work with, with the groups that's come to town, or even the groups that are from town. Um, I, I'm, as far as like the volunteers and stuff, a lot of cities, they'll, they'll train up the volunteers and then do like a release of liability type waiver, and then, you know, they, they take over the barricades or whatnot, which would be helpful because a lot of work for public works um, on a Saturday or Sunday. Um, so I think that'd be a great idea to 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 be able to help them. And just, I know the whole fee thing is really kind of raised some eyebrows. This, the fees for these functions, that it's not new. It's not like something we created last night. Um, it's been around for decades. It just, sometimes people were charged and sometimes people weren't. So it's nice to hear some discussion on this, so it makes it fair for everybody. Um, you know, who's who's to pick and choose what nonprofit pays and what nonprofit doesn't pay, or what commercial pays or whatnot. So this is good. This is, this is good to talk about this. And I know a lot of people, you know, were concerned with it. But just once again, this, this is, this is new, and this isn't something that we created. This, this council, it's been around for a long time. So, um, thank you for bringing this up. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, um, thank you, um, City Manager Ashley for bringing this to us for discussion. And as Councilmember Freels said, the fees have been around for a while. It's just the inconsistency of how they've been levied, whether or not they've even been levied, how much is collected. Um, I agree with Councilmember um, Aranda that we should give some consideration, really strong consideration for local in-town nonprofits. Um, I did mention this a few meetings ago. Um, I really think that to promote the viability of our local business people, our local nonprofits, meaning San Juan City proper, um, they should be looked at. I believe there should be some some tiers, some special consideration that applies to all of our local nonprofits. some special consideration that applies to all of our local nonprofits. And also I'm a stickler for who gets determined that they're a nonprofit or not. There's a definition, but there's also legal paperwork. They must have a board of directors. They must have public meetings that are open to the public. Um, you know, so all those have to be met. Um, and when does a nonprofit become, you know, a business versus a residence versus a whatever, whatever, whatever? So I think that all has to be squared away. Um, I I I took offense and I'm gonna if I may, um, mayor, comment on a co- a public comment about us being the gatekeepers. And in essence, what I took away from that comment or commentary was that we sitting up here are not in favor of working with local businesses. And that could be nothing further from the truth. I just want that publicly stated. We are here um to support local businesses and viability and traditions and whatnot. So that being put out there. I don't see my role as a gatekeeper. I see my role as everybody across the board is treated the same way. And how can a city not function if we don't have some fees that we incur, that businesses have to incur? And also it's up to individuals' business plan. If it's not working, then you flex. And if you can't flex anymore, then that's your personal decision to close your door, unfortunately. We're also looking at another venue to promote that doors are not shuttered, businesses are not shuttered, which is taking a step further and looking at the property owners themselves. So um, nothing further from the truth. We do support businesses.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sabathia.
Hi. Um, I I love that this is on the agenda. I do wish folks had stayed around. Um, this would be a a perfect opportunity, perfect forum to discuss some of the the concerns. I do think there's a lot of misinformation, mudslinging and 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 name calling going around with people not really understanding the facts. I do know that our our city staff and I I applaud and stand behind you guys, you know. A- as our ordinances and fee schedules and and things are 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 out there, I think some of the rankling like like Councilmember Freels mentioned is because what we are doing now, what we as as a as a council and city staff is is applying all these things fairly across across all, no matter who's who's coming, who's doing what. And you know, it's a, I take that as a point of pride, if if nothing else, that like, hey, we're 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 not making special exceptions for for anybody or anything. If we if we do decide to have a ranked priority of of who who gets to have something waived or not, i- it's going to be an ordinance that is passed by us, not something that is done behind closed doors. And and, you know, nobody knows what the what the rules are. So everything will be you know, public and and in terms of things that are said, I think all of us up here universally and people who have have served here in the past, this is a, this is a you know, I consider myself to be part of our a service organization. None of us are are profiting from any of this. We don't get any gain from it. Um, taking time away from from our families and personal lives to make sure that that you know, we're stewarding our town and our community to the future for for, you know, generations to come. Um, I do want to make sure that if 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 if, you know, I I I trust that that um city manager uh will look into you know, not not having us sign up for waiving fees that we can't afford to pay. A lot of our our fees that are paid, the city's not profiting from this, like you know, we gotta bill hours for employees. Employees need to get paid. Um, I've had some really bad experiences with volunteers running barricades. Um, and and unsafe situations, you know, pedestrians meeting uh vehicles, like it's it it's bad. So if there's training, it's gotta be, it's gotta be strict. Um, you know, this is what our Public Works people do. This is what city people do. Um, you know, and until we've got some strict training program, release of liability forms, all those types of things, it's it's in our best interest to allow city staff to do those types of things. And you know, and maybe this is more about communication, having people who are applying for things, really understanding why am I being billed this fee schedule and people understanding, hey, you know, barricades have to be set up, streets have to be cleaned. Things have to be removed and understanding exactly where those costs are are going. Could go a long way, even if we can't, you know, especially if we can't get to the point where we can zero out things for people, just having them really understand, hey, what's this for?
Madam Mayor.
Wow, thank you for all those comments. Um, I'm I'm gonna take a shot at this first.
No worries.
Thanks.
Yeah, take another shot.
That's we get to come back to you. Um, thank you. Um, amazing comments on this. I'm really thrilled that that this has come before us. Um, this is the first step of the city. Um, uh, moving forward as as a city on where we want to go, where as as Mayor Protem said, that we're going to start treating everybody the same. But a little bit different, um, depending on what kind of a nonprofit. And I appreciate Councilmember Morris Lopez and and what she said, having a a true nonprofit and making sure that all of that is um up to up to snuff and all the paperwork is. And and I appreciate that the city wants to to move forward and and partner in this way. Um, this is something that that we've been talking about for a while and is truly amazing. I am really disappointed in um, all those who left, who got up during public comment and and uh, made comments that we are not uh for the community. Um, I think this council, more than any other council in the jurisdictions, are a hundred percent for our community. Um, we want to see this city thrive. We all live here, um, and none of us get paid to do this. We are the biggest nonprofit of this community. Um, uh, um, some of us have been here generationally. Some of us are are brand new to the community and each and every one of us want want to see this city thrive. Um, and for various reasons, businesses have closed and that's their personal reasons and not for us to judge. Um, and um, we are thrilled that we are getting new businesses in every day and and look forward to welcoming them in. Um, and for all of those who want to have events, good on good on those nonprofits for stepping up and and trying to do good for um, the the community and bringing bringing money into um our city. Um, so thank you for 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 this. This is an amazing step in moving forward as a city. Uh, Councilmember Aronda, I'm sorry, hang on. Public comment.
Uh, no speaker cards received, but we do have one hand raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Eddie, welcome.
Team, I really appreciate your efforts and what you're doing tonight. Um, sorry if my hair's messed messed up a bit and my dogs are going wild. Um, real quick, so I think, first of all, I my p- personal comment is you don't get the 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 recognition you you deserve because we are mo- all trying to move forward to make this place, you know, better than what it was gifted to us. But on top of that, um, going back to the, okay, well, when we deal with nonprofits, um, is there anything set in stone? Do we have a procedure? Do we have a guidance or a guideline that says, hey, um, this, if you have this nonprofit, it falls under this category, or if you're, you know, wanting to come in and and build up and start something new? Is this something that we can rally behind and and, you know, encourage it? Um, I feel there's a lot of enthusiasm um coming into San Juan Batista, but there seems to be just a lack of promotion, right? So that's one thing. Second thing I I would ask would be like um, as far as marketing, like not marketing, like where's, you know, cold or or Walmart or Starbucks, but word word by mouth, like how can we attract more people? And I think that's probably a good strategy that we should look into. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Sorry. Back to the council. Councilmember Aronda.
Um, I just I wanted to add, um, going back to Mayor Protem Sabathia's uh comment where um, I think we do need to do a little better at communicating with the local nonprofits or anyone that's throwing in an event in town. I I agree with that statement. Um, but in the means of, and I I believe our city manager is working on this, but I think one of the biggest frustrations that I'm also hearing from from the nonprofits is we don't have our fee schedule posted. That is the biggest or one of the biggest frustrations everyone is is upset about. And and when it comes to that, it means they will, and I I personally done it because I put in and I I put in a couple of applications um for events myself. And one of them being is you sign this paperwork, you write out this check and then you're told, hey, it might be eight hundred dollars for us to do with barricades and whatnot. So guess what? The nonprofits, these businesses will budget eight hundred dollars for their event and that's it. Well, guess what? Next thing you know, they'll host their event and their bill is now fourteen, fifteen, sixteen hundred dollars. Now, for some of these nonprofits that don't have a lot of money, that's a make it or break it situation and they didn't even know at the time. And so that's one of the biggest frustrations that falls under the communication part. And so that's one thing I think needs to be fixed or taken a look at and prioritized because it's just, it's hard for them. Yes, I I agree with all our our council members here. I think it was Councilmember um Morris Lopez who had said, we these but these charges have existed, this fee schedule has been there. But guess what? Ask anybody or go on our website. Where do you find it? What is it? And why does it fluctuate? And it doesn't fluctuate by a fifty or a hundred dollars. It fluctuates by hundreds. So it's it, that's pretty frustrating. Um, and that's something I get a lot of heat for when I'm when I'm speaking to um members of the public. So that would be something I would like to also see and address um as well. That's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Freels.
We had the, for some reason, I thought we had those posted or on on our website. Thank you, uh, Councilmember Morris Lopez for um kind of defending us with the comments that were made. There were some very negative comments by the same person on Facebook and and I'm and I'm here to tell her right now, none of us are lining our pockets. None of us want our cut. We're just rules have to be followed. And sometimes the rules are above us. Um, when it comes to these big events, you know, people like ABC and health departments. So not like, we're not out there to this, I've heard this, this is the first time in my whole life, living in San Juan, where I've heard people blame a city so much for the failures of the, you know, what's going on around here, when the whole state is taking a giant dive right now. This is, I mean, it's not our fault. The gas is seven bucks a gallon in some places. It's not our fault. That California is one of the worst business climates in the nation. It's not our fault. We didn't do this. You're mad at somebody. Call your Congresswoman or call your Congressman or your Senator. In that being said, I'm happy that we're gonna start working with folks. And we can streamline it. It doesn't have to be, it's pretty convoluted right now, isn't it? Yeah. Yeah, and I don't know where that came from. I don't know why it's so difficult. But yeah, let's uh, it's this is gonna be nice. We'll streamline it. And I believe the the current staff that we have right now is going to be able to pull that off. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez. Morris Lopez, sorry.
Thank you, Mayor Jordan. Um, and I appreciate everyone's comments and um, Councilmember Aronda, everybody. Um, I think that you're right. Um, visibility, um, you know, so that the public can look at the fees. That's that's a huge thing, transparency, visibility. I don't think it was intentional not to be transparent. I just think it's the bandwidth that we had with the staff or lack of staff before. So we're coming, you know, we're we're getting things squared away. And um and I apologize if my comments may have seemed a little accusatory, but I am, you know, really um really strong on the fact that, you know, you can't blame a city and we do respect people's personal um choices to maybe shut their door. We know it's really hard out there, but pointing the finger solely at us sitting up here and our staff, it's it's not the reason. It's you know, you have to look within yourself. We're doing that up here when we come to the dais as to how we can fix the city and listen to the public and try to go forward with that. So um and I am glad that we do have new businesses coming in and sometimes you have to go through, you know, growth or not growth to get to where you want to go. And um, you know, city doesn't have the rodeo, doesn't have the Christmas bonfire, you know, a couple parades are gone, one might go. So then we have to put our heads together as a community and council members and staff to think like, how can we reinvent what we had and make it a different version? Um, and still, you know, honor the traditions um of our community. And I also feel that um, you know, we just, we just have to be more positive. And yeah, things are really not that great. Um, at the state level, but also the federal level, the national level. And just remember, our GBT, our GBD or our gross national product is one of like what fourth in the world? So I'm not gonna beat up California in that sense. I mean, we give a lot of money to other states, so I think we're doing great. Um, but it's hard times for everybody. And so how we can we come together as a community? And I just want to put put the plug out there that there is, I think, um, community member Eddie Sanchez stated, how do we get people in? How do we advertise? There is one nonprofit, you know, and I did look at their packet that we all got. They have been doing that as part of their work. Um, that is the spirit of San Juan. And um, they have been, you know, promoting us and doing what they need to do um, outside of the county. Um, so there is, there is a nonprofit that's taken up that job, which we do not have a chamber of commerce, as we all know. So they've taken up the task of trying to promote our city. And yeah, so anyway, that's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Sabathia.
Uh, question more than a comment for the city manager. When we are charging fees and looking at these, are we billing flat rates or hourly for the the time that we have city staff setting stuff up and doing things?
I believe it's hourly. I'd have to double check.
Yep. Yeah, that that would explain some of the thought it was gonna take me this. But it actually took us this many hours type of thing.
And if I could double check, I could also add, sorry, not double check. It's adding, you have to understand that it's also depending on its public works. So a lot of times this is additional hours and it also falls into overtime.
Thank you. Um, a- and I as I appreciate all the comments that have been going back and forth on fee schedules. Um, the fee schedules are a a beast of its own. And we have several, we have a plethora of fees in this city. Um, so it's not just a matter of going and looking at our permit fees. It's every single fee that is associated with running a city. And um, the city is working diligently on a fee schedule. Um, so that wasn't actually part of this discussion. Um, part of this discussion was whether or not we're gonna direct staff to establish a policy for city sponsored events conducted by or in partnership with nonprofits. And I am a hundred percent in favor of um the city um working in concert with nonprofits as long as um, they are actual nonprofits and where their money goes to when we're looking at all of that stuff as well. Um, so if the council um approves, um, I'd like to direct staff to to move forward with this policy. All all good? Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Um, moving forward, moving forward. Um, yay for the city. Uh, informational items, city manager um report.
I jotted down a couple of notes. Um, it's gonna be real brief. I do not have a PowerPoint presentation tonight. Um, I promise to try to revive that for next month. Um, couple of things, I'll note that City Hall went through a gigantic renovation uh for the month of July. And I want to say to Public Works, to our staff, to the residents, thank you so much for your patience. Um, we went through a a a deep cleaning and we discovered lots of things about ourselves. We had some some hiccups along the way and I I just want to say thank you to Public Works, to our staff and to the residents for your patience. Um, and um, and as we we've experienced some challenges, especially regarding our water bills and muni billing, we're working through those diligently. Um, and we should be, you should be receiving your new bill in the mail uh shortly. So it's it's coming. Um, I also um want to acknowledge Congresswoman Zola. So it's, it's coming. Um, I also, um, want to acknowledge, uh, Congresswoman Zoe Lofgren um, and State Senator Laird, uh, for coming to visit City Hall and sitting down with, uh, staff and council um, to discuss, um, our Force Main project and to discuss a lot of our, um, challenges that we're having. Um, and also to thank both, uh, Congresswoman Lofgren at the federal level because we have been, uh, we've been, um, awarded some or we've been put in for some appropriations as more accurate. So up, in the upcoming budget, we have, uh, lots of money appropriated for San Juan Batista for our water transmission pipeline. So I would like to thank, uh, Lofgren for a million dollars that she put in for us. Senator Schiff put in funding for us as well as Senator Padilla. So we wanted to thank them. Uh, we also wanna thank, uh, Speaker Rivas and Senator Laird for appropriating a million dollars, uh, in our state budget. Uh, so we are super grateful and super appreciative, um, of their support, um, and thank them for the visit. Um, and that is all I have for now and I promise next month you'll get a PowerPoint.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? Council member Aronda?
No, thank you. Uh, the, the city hall looks great. Um, amazing, great work. Um, thank you again to Public Works staff and everyone who's, uh, put time and effort into it. Uh, when I walked in yesterday, it was, it was jaw dropping. It's a great work. Good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Frails.
Um, no, it, just other than it's really nice to see a professional looking office. It's, it's clean, it's well lit. It's, uh, it's, it's inviting. So it's nice and good timing when you have a US Congresswoman and a state senator show up and it's just nice and fresh and clean. It's sure was nicer than the way it looked before. So I think it helped with morale too. Thank you.
Thank you. Council member Morris Lopez.
Yeah, ditto with what everyone said and it doesn't smell like old still cigars. It's so fresh.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
More of the same. It looks great in here.
Yeah, thank you very much. I appreciate it. Um, and it was really nice to have all of those electeds, um, coming in. Uh, one to a new home, um, but two, to actually, uh, sitting down with us. That was awesome. Uh, looking forward to one or two more coming in. Um, fire department, uh, public comment. Sorry, public comment?
No speaker cards received, but I do have one hand raised on Zoom.
Thank you. Welcome, Eddie.
Hello, um, just wanted to say thank you so much, Liz. I appreciate all the snacks and the hard work that you put in to put these packets together. City council, I really appreciate you. Um, it's daunting at times, I know, and it's tireless. And sometimes it goes unrewarded, but what we do, what, what you do, um, is greatly appreciated because it's setting the foundation for how we move forward. And that's all I have. Oh, and also, uh, Mr. Frails, I love your shirt.
Thank, thank you, Eddie. Uh, fire department update. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Council. Just to start off, uh, thank you for your support. Uh, your comments on the dais were much appreciated by myself and staff and the recognition for, uh, Public Works for their hard work. Very, very appreciated. I know a lot of them watched this meeting. And so they'll be making comments to me tomorrow during our monthly staff meeting. So this is much appreciated. Just wanna give that thanks. Um, so to my reporting, long fire monthly. So this is both for the months of June and July for both agencies. So Sheriff's Office reported four domestic violence related calls. Uh, uneventful Fourth of July weekend, knock on wood. Um, nothing really was reported to the sheriff's office or the fire department. And then on the first of July, suspicious male approached a juvenile at a local park. The area was canvassed. And there was an entry posted on social media. Um, the suspect was not found in that case. The sheriff's office is still following up on that. There were no other reports other than the one. Um, so there was nothing else reported neither here or in any surrounding areas. Um, second case of graffiti at the roundabout in Mural and the graffiti at the, um, is a FEO. And I guess there's some background. One of the librarians or library techs had given me a background. I guess it was an individual that had passed away in the community several years ago and that was his nickname. So I don't know the background, but somebody's giving us some information on that. So we're looking into that. And then one hit and run case on Monterey Street. And then they helped out with the encampment project that I'll talk about a little bit further in my presentation. And then the fire department, one fire third, it was an outside rubbish fire, thirty-five medical calls. Twenty-three vehicle accidents with only one in the city. One special event that they, um, approved the permit, that was for Los Pedrinos. Eight inspections. That includes Mission Market, which is a new market in town, two residential solders, hotel inspection at La Posada and the firework booth. As far as code enforcement, uh, the code enforcement officer had two stop work orders, three violations, which included buildings without, um, permits for property, trash and debris on property. And then working on municipal code violations pertaining to downtown, uh, regarding outside seedings and signs. So we're still looking into the sign ordinance and enforcing that. And a lot of them are the, um, the folding signs that they place on the sidewalk. So we're looking into that and the lightings. And then coordinating with the county agencies on the illegal encampment. That took up a lot of time and I'll explain why. And then my projects, uh, we talked about the renovation of City Hall, entire City Hall, but, um, another big ticket item was three Ford Mavericks were delivered to us. Um, one of those replaced the code enforcement cop car looking thing that I didn't like when I first got here. So that thing's gone. Um, so there's no more of that, um, perception. Um, and then the two other Mavericks went to Public Works as did three full-size Chevy trucks. So no more of the vehicles with, uh, duct tape on the, um, on the toolboxes. So we've gone away from that. Um, no major recalls for service on the Fourth of July within the city. Uh, that was nice. I, I had been coordinating a Fourth of July response with fire, sheriff's office, Hollister PD, uh, Cal Fire. I was attending a bunch of different meetings uh, regarding the response to the Fourth of July, both in the city of Hollister, San Juan Batista and out in the county. So I was happy to report all the agencies got along. Uh, every single jurisdiction got along and we're working in coordination for a response. So happy to provide that there was nothing major that happened in the entire county during that, that weekend. So that was good. Uh, we assist public work staff with planning City Hall remodel project, uh, as we spoke about. Partnering with responsible county environmental health, on street vendors, we had talked about that several months back. Um, so a lot of that was dealt with. Um, and then we worked on the new personnel procedures. Where I worked on the new personnel procedures with, with the city clerk and that's brought us up to date. I'm happy to report that that's bringing us into the future as well. Uh, we went from a personnel manual that was maybe about what, twenty-five pages to now a robust personnel manual that covers a lot more that we needed to bring up to standards. So I'm happy to report on that as well. And, uh, working with local, the local market on fire safety rules and regulations, that's taken up a lot of my, my time. I've spoken to a couple of you about that and I've spoken to a lot of, uh, other people. So happy to report that we're working with the fire department or fire marshal uh, for resolve on that. Um, and then the encampment removal. Um, there was a lot of back and forth on that, but we're happy to report that the, uh, a lot of, um, local residents helped the unhoused individual to relocate him. Um, and he's, he's in a different area. He's in the county area. County Sheriff's Office does know about it, as do all the other agencies. Uh, he was provided tons of service or offered tons of service, which that individual refused. So I know there was a lot of back and forth on that, but we tried and, uh, it just wasn't accepted. Um, in regards to the, another person that's, and I know we have a couple, but there was another person that we're dealing with as well. Um, I have, happy to report that that person is receiving county, um, help assistance. And I think as of September first, I should be getting housing. That was a report I got from county environmental, environmental health, uh, just yesterday. So that's, that's, that's progress. And we're dealing with that person's vehicle as well. We're just trying to relocate that. So we should be seeing movement by September first. And then met with local businesses regarding, um, events hosted on the property and I don't wanna go into that again, but you guys know what I've been doing. So that is my report. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much for that. Council member Aronda.
Yeah, I have one question. Thank you for the report, um, and all the great stuff you've been doing. Um, uh, for the local businesses that are hosting their events, have you heard of any complaints, issues with? I've seen flyers that said BYOB, things like that of a nuisance that maybe presents a problem for our town.
Uh, I've heard from other businesses and other residents, um, of people leaving a certain property intoxicated or walking into other, uh, businesses, uh, with open containers and placing other businesses, uh, alcohol, um, licenses in jeopardy.
Got it.
That was one of the biggest complaints.
Sweet, thank you.
Alcohol and beverage control state agency has been notified.
Got it. Thank you. Um, that's all I had. Thanks again for the report.
Thank you, Council member Frails.
I'm, I know what it is with just a quick, um, stop work order that somebody working without a permit or
Correct.
Okay, yeah. Um, and, you know, just, and just for who's ever left, you know, every city and every county in this nation has building permits and building laws that they have to follow. We have different in the southern states or northern states, but it, it's all for a reason. It's all for public safety. And, um, you know, if you're building without a building permit, um, in my opinion, you're disregarding public safety. So unfortunately, the project gets stopped and a big red tag is put on the door and we, you know, work with them. I'm sure you guys have been working with a lot of the folks. So, um, thanks for that. And I am so happy to see the new fleet of pickups. Yes, it's, it's four years later when I first asked for them. So this is great. Yeah, um, I'm sure the guys are stoked. I was talking to Nick. He goes, he's all the air conditioner even works. So this is good. Good. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Council member Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you, um, um, Mr. Morales. Um, good report. You're always very detailed. Um, good to hear that nothing happened on the Fourth of July. Excellent. Um, I have a question. So, uh, two, the first one is what happens now that the gentleman um, has refused and now he's in the county? So we're no longer responsible for doing any enforcement with him?
Correct.
Or her?
Correct.
So, so what is the county? Have you heard anything about them? What are they gonna do?
I was told, uh, when we were discussing other individuals, that we're gonna do some follow-up, see if that person would be open to assistance.
Yeah, cuz it's still a health and security hazard. You know, there aren't, um, restrooms out there. Still the same thing. Great news on the other individual. That's awesome. I know you've been working really hard. And then my other question is in regards to the fire, uh, codes and regulations with the local market. Can you speak to any of that without violating privacy or whatever?
No.
Okay. My comment.
You have enough time, but no.
Okay, comment is I hate to see anything happen that would cause that business to say bye. Um, one thing I wanna say is that that is a historical building. That was there a long time before Scott and I were born. And so, you know, maybe there's some other avenues to look at. Um, how you can work with those codes in relationship to a historical building. May not look as old as the ones downtown, but none of those have sprinklers and whatnot. So I think we need to really work hard to work in favor of that business. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Sabathia.
I'm really enjoying having a local spot to buy meat. So do what you gotta do.
Thank you.
Uh, appreciate all the, I mean, you know, some of the updates seem routine at this point, but I think that just speaks to what we've come to expect out of our, our staff these days. And I, I appreciate all the updates on, on things. I had a question. Oh, um, there was a comment earlier with respect to a previous code enforcement case that you brought. Um, maybe if you can, you aren't prepared to give an update now, maybe we can later. But the issue with the, the fencing and, and shrubbery and whatnot, I had driven by and it looked like the fence was down. And I drive by there often, going to the park with my daughter, but I was under the impression that we were done.
Not, not yet.
Okay.
There are a lot of those are still pending.
Okay.
And, and it is nice to hear that the city has been working diligently on it, um, regardless of what it seems like in the public. Um, the city has handled all of these situations that, um, Roy has talked about. Wow, senior moment. Um, he has worked with every single issue that has been brought up here. Um, and so has the, um, the whole entire staff. Um, in spite of the twenty-seven phone calls you get a day on the same issue. Um, uh, we are working on, we collectively, all of you all are working on, on, um, and continue to work on that. And, and that's really nice. And unfortunately, the public doesn't see that. But, but know that they are continuously working on them. Um, I appreciate the street vendor, um, cleanup. Did we not give any citations on the Fourth of July?
Yeah.
Wow. Uh, okay. Um, with all of the work that, uh, the city had done with the encampment across from the apartment complex, um, we were moving forward to, um, having signs posted to help the individual there. Can the county not pick up right from where we left off and continue on that path?
They can. I, I've been, uh, in discussion with all the partners that originally assisted with that. So I'll ask for an update this week.
Because all of those partners are the same partners that were in, in, within hours of, of helping out, um, the community helped out and, and thwarted that effort um, for, um, clean and safe, um, uh, dwelling. Um, so for them to continue that and pick up where, where, within hours of, of where we left off. That's all I have. Do we have any public comment? Did we do public comment already? I'm
There's no speaker cards and seeing no hands raised on Zoom, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Um, did I see, there he is, Fire Marshal, um, Charlie Bedoya. Um, did you have anything to add to the discussion without giving anything away?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thanks for hanging in there with us. Um, and again, thanks to, uh, thanks for the new fleet. The guys are, are loving it. I, I have been in several of them. Um, and everything that, that Public Works has done and continues to do with, with all of their new toys. Appreciate it. Um, reports from, uh, city representatives to regional organizations and committees. Uh, council member Aronda.
Um, I attended a few, few, um, things. Um, one of them was the, God, I can never get them right. Is it the San Benito County Business Council?
Yes.
Yes, that's, I attended that meeting with Robert Rivas. Um, he, it was, it was a really nice lunch. Um, he went over, um, you know, some, some of the stuff that he's helped us with, like the freeway and, um, talking about his, kind of his frustrations with local government between our jurisdictions and other agencies and how we don't really, we, he represents us or he's from this area, but, um, we just can't all get along. So it, it causes a lot of issues. And so he was bringing up some of those things and, um, which helps me understand like maybe we can do better at, at working with, with other individuals from other agencies. And so, um, that's always a, a good thing. It's always good to, to see him. Um, also attended the, um, integrated, I can't remember if it was in July, but there was an Integrated Waste Green Mixer, I think, where we handed out the awards for, um, uh, either new businesses or businesses that are, are doing well, that are staying green. Um, there was a few from San Juan Batista, so I was really proud, um, to see that. Um, just, just so the public knows, San Juan does lead the way when it comes to, um, green businesses and, and, um, uh, waste diversion and all that. So, um, way to go, SJB. I'm really, really happy to report that. Um, uh, other things that I attended was the Feeding America event at the, um, San Juan, uh, the San Benito Health Foundation, which was really nice. We got to talk with Zoe Lofren um, and volunteer some time there. What a great event. I think they had up to six hundred, um, cars that came through that needed, you know, Cars that came through that needed, you know, assistance or food or, or whatnot. So that, that was eye opening. Really great event. Happy to help them and look forward to another. Another thing that I attended was here in town. I tend to try to support some of our, our events here. I did the Mandela. Painted the street. I think it looks really great. So every time I see it. So great work, Ramona and on doing that event and participated in the, our little garage sale event. For San Juan Day. So that was amazing. Got to talk to a lot of great locals, shop around. I love the BFW Flea Market. And the little pop-up at Vertigo that was the, was it the groove thing? That the Posada was hosting that got shifted. So really great to see a lot of people.
Makers Market.
Makers Market. That, that's what it was. So that's, that's pretty much all I got that I can think of right now. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Friel.
Thank you. I didn't attend the Area Agency on Aging. Cuz I was on a trout stream at seventy-five hundred feet in the Sierras. Had to go to church. Did, did sit in with the meeting with our Congresswoman and State Senator. With the mayor and our staff. It was nice to see our Senator go out to the, he went out to our super plant and looked around and saw what we were doing and. He had a pretty good grasp of a few things too. Yeah, I was happy to see that. It's, I, I would say get a tour and go look, see what's been changed and then they'll tell you what's going away. So it's gonna look a lot, that little lot right there is gonna look a lot nicer and be, you know, cleaned up a little bit. Let's see, I'll just throw in my comment now. The, the event, the, the San Juan event, all San Juan event, I thought it was a great event. I mean, there was, I, I hit every yard sale twice, you know, just in case. And, and then the VFW had a great, they had a. Fantastic turnout. Yeah, day before yesterday, they had the open mic night at the VFW. And poor, poor Mario behind the bar was getting his butt kicked. He was just trying to keep up with everybody. So it was a super busy event and it was, looks like it's something they want to do more often, which is gonna be great. I'm just, I'm combining both here. And then as far, I know there's some people upset on the public comments on, on the. The senior center coming to the library. This was never in the plan. It, it's not. Some, there was one person, I think, went around saying that the senior center's going there. He even said it in a public, you know, forum. It's not in the plan. And we are all aware and the city staff is aware of the, of the restrictions on that will indeed. So. Everybody put their pitchforks away. I'm looking forward to a senior center being somewhere in this town. It's not going to be at the library because we can't, it just can't happen. Everything else? Good to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Morris Lopez.
Yes, thank you. Well, July was blackout month, so not a lot happened. I did attend a really nice event here in town at the VFW. It was on behalf of honoring. Alex Zeller, our local wood carver. Learned a lot more about him that I didn't know. I saw Councilmember Friel's there, a few other locals. That is going to be, I think, an event sponsored by the Historical Society, maybe quarterly.
They want to try to do something.
Yeah, so it was really nice to see a lot of locals, but also Mr. Zeller was kind of my neighbor. And one of the hallmarks of his career was to carve a lot of the woodwork at the Madonna Inn in Paso Roble. No, Slow, San Luis Obispo. But the story I heard, I was shocked as to why the carving started. I thought it was because he became ill. But it actually was not that, as you recall what they told us. So that was an eye opener. Kind of a misunderstanding or something of the sort of the business nature. But anyway, it's beautiful carving if you ever get a chance to go. And then I attended something that's not part of. Council member, but I feel it's important as a community member. I went to a official training in Hollister at the Epic Center. To be trained as a legal observer when it comes to any ICE raids. In the area. It's sponsored by Tri-County, Santa Cruz, Monterey and San Benito. And it, it was hosted by the San Benito Group. And so I was there with a lot of other locals. So I'm on a call list now if I can go. Tomorrow, there will be a cog meeting that I will be part of as an update on Highway twenty-five. And then Thursday is our monthly cog meeting, so I'll report out on that next month. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Sebastian.
I think the only meeting that I attended, you and I attended since blackout was the Water Resources Board. Meeting. There were a lot of important things talked about, but I don't think there was anything actionable for us out of there or. Or news. There's a lot of informational.
I, I think it was, was it on A-Drop?
It was on A-Drop and there, there's, it's kind of a, I don't want to call it a PR campaign, but like, I think there's a lot of, of. Rehashing of information so that people get comfortable with it about, about A-Drop and the plans and that. For those who don't know, I don't know what, I can't remember what A-Drop stands for, but it's to do with, with where we store water.
Aquifer storage and recovery, but it's.
I knew you'd know.
For emergency drought.
Yeah, that. It's kind of wild to me as a concept that they're gonna store the water in the ground.
Yeah.
Cuz in the ground it absorbs the water. To me, it just.
It does.
And then we gotta, gotta pay them millions of dollars to make the ground wet. But, you know. I know there's more technical to it than that, but that's how, that's how it seems to me. And then in terms of community things that have been going on, we, my family and I have been loving the farmer's market that we have. That's where we're getting all our, our fruit now. So that's been a consistent thing that's been happening. That's fun. Just happened, I mean, as, as much as there is information and things about, you know, people focusing in on things that are closing or not happening. There is a lot going on.
It's a lot.
And there are a lot of people like, just putting a lot of time and energy into making sure that things continue to happen and happen on a consistent basis. But I wanted, I wanted to call that one out specifically. There's a lot of good quality, quality food being.
That the bread.
And raspberries. There. So it's great, it's great to have that. I mean, we're, we're an agriculturally centered town, having a consistent farmer's market. It's gotta be a hallmark of what we're, what we're doing.
It's fine, it's finally a real farmer's market and not a bunch of.
Yeah.
Cheap stuff.
Yeah, and some of it is locally sourced. Lafco Cultiva is, is there.
And the Grakes have their.
Yep.
Fantastic avocados.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Anything else?
I had one more on the area agents.
Go ahead.
I got an email from them today. They are giving out. They're almost, they're like a voucher for the seniors for all the farmers markets. Now we talked about farmers in the air, Hollister, Santa Cruz, Watsonville. And there's one other one. I'll, I'll forward that email to all of you. And I'd like to get some to Rochelle. So she can copy them. It's a great idea if we can help feed seniors, which is good.
Yeah, absolutely. Is one of them at the Del Monte Shopping Center?
No, because we don't do Monterey County.
Okay.
The Santa Cruz, Santa, San Benito, yeah.
Okay. Thank you for that. Lafco met. And the, one of the biggest things that we discussed were tax sharing negotiations. We have three items before us. But the county and the city are just now starting their negotiations on, on how those tax sharing agreements are going to work. We have one since January of twenty-four, one from May of twenty-five. And one that just came before us. And the third, the third one that came before us was an annexation from a water system in Hollister. That will now be merging with Sunny Slope and, and getting a better supply of water. Also, if anybody is interested. Lafco is inviting you to send a letter describing your background and reasons why you want to become a. Lafco selected public member or public member alternate to serve on Lafco. That closes on September third. So anybody interested in being the public member of Lafco. Please, please submit your letter of intent. To Lafco San Benito County. There's a place on there to, to do that. The wastewater MSR Municipal Service Review is coming before Lafco in September. And both cities, the city of San Juan Batista and Hollister MSRs. Will be going to the ad hoc committee in September to get those rolling. Fire Advisory Committee. We are finally moving forward with a district feasibility study. The county was the last holdup only because they had to go to their board to get approval to move forward on it. So we'll hear about that in September. There's a special meeting. Tourism is next week. Intergovernmental is coming up. Business Council. It was nice to have Speaker Rivas in our area again. Hopefully shout out to Speaker Rivas. He will be coming to San Juan Batista soon. He actually spoke very highly of San Juan and was very. Concerned about or it, it wasn't even concerned. It, he was very disapproving of the, the way that the county. And the city of Hollister are, and their lack of communication. And he spoke a lot about that. Water Resources Association was canceled. We're still waiting for. A staffer for that position. Green Business Mixer. The city is actually working on becoming a green business, which is super cool. Because we are the first city to do that or the first jurisdiction to do that. Sat in with Congresswoman Lafran, Senator Laird, and actually did a tour of San Benito County. With one of Senator Schiff's. Staffers who ended up coming over to San Juan. And it was pretty cool. For, for senators who have not been here in this county because they are doing so much on a federal level. To have their presence was, was super great. We talked a lot about water issues, wastewater issues, among other things. Roads which continue to be a big topic of conversation. A couple of, I think that's all the meetings I attended in the last two weeks. Recognitions to the Mandala. What another beautiful piece of work that, that came into, into town. And to see, or to talk about the layers upon layers of Mandalas that have come before it. That will continue to be the space that they, they had them, that they will have them. Shout out to. Spirit of San Juan. They were the recipient of the Native Daughters of the Golden West California Image Award. Celebrating the significant contributions to California tourism. Through promoting the historic significance of Old Mission, San Juan Batista, the State Historic Park. The Wanda Anza Hiking Trail and the Historic Third Street Shopping District. Unique organic farms through articles, ads in Visit California Magazine, Sunset Magazine, photographs. And listings in California Original Road Trip Magazine, AAA Via Magazine and National Parks Magazine. So congratulations, big shout out to them for all of the stuff that they do for the city. That might, that might be it on my list. No, I have one PSA. Thanks to Christina Chavez Wyatt, who is, leads the Business Council. Sent information on Caltrans. They're beginning modifications. To the intersection of Rocks Road, Cannon Road and Highway one oh one. The modifications include the full closure of that median. So there's no crossing over from Rocks to go south or from Cannon to go north. That work begins on Tuesday, September twelfth during the overnight hours. So all y'all who are traveling away from here. At the end of the day, please be careful. That's all I have.
Mayor, can I add something else? It's a PSA for, for SJB rec. I totally forgot. We have Play Music on the Porch Day. It was a huge event last year and I believe it's, it's even more homes this year. So I just wanted to let everyone know it's August thirtieth. I don't know what the time is. I'm looking at the.
That's a national event too. So if you're in the city on the thirtieth walk around, it's a super cool event.
Starts at eleven.
Where bands are sitting on porches and you can go around and listen to all different kinds of music.
It's, it's August thirtieth, eleven to two. And if you go onto the SJB Recreation Instagram page. There's a QR code where you can get a map of all the homes, but I, I believe it's, it's if not double, I think this year. From what we had last year and it was a very successful event.
Super cool. Thank you for that.
Apologies.
See you next month. Can I have a motion to adjourn? Thank you. May I have a second?
Second.
Motion made by Mayor Protem Sebastian, seconded by Councilmember Morris Lopez. May I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Aronda?
Yes.
Councilmember Friel?
Yes.
Councilmember Morris Lopez?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Sebastian?
Yes.
Mayor Jordan?
Yes. Thank you. Thanks, City Attorney. Safe travels.